Yes.
Hey John. Okay, we'll start the meeting in the place if you guys want to stand up to the place. What nation?
To the flag, the United States of America and to the public for which space one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice are.
Alrighty. Oh, we got first thing.
So for the first one, we have Brian and Chris. You're representing. For Energy North. No, yeah, North Group, Hafners, right?
Both.
Both, yes.
Oh, for, okay, for this sake. Alright, come on, play on.
Good evening, board. Thank you for taking the time to see us this evening. Uh, Brian Tromley from Hampstead, New Hampshire. Chris York is, is on, uh, is on remotely. He's from GPI Engineering.
Okay.
Um, representing Energy North Hafners, uh, who's out of Lawrence, Massachusetts. We are, um. In our plan proposing to relocate the bulk storage propane tanks. Uh, which were previously in the rear of the property, one ninety-eight Patriots Road here.
Mm-hmm.
Installed by the previous owner, um, those were not usable. So those have since been removed and we're, um. Posing to relocate them further, further ahead in the property along the pond side.
Where were they located before?
They were in the far back of that property.
On the property here, the way up back, does it not?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Um. For various reasons of, of which I, I don't know all of them, they, those particular tanks were not up to code.
That's.
Um, in addition to that, we weren't able to reposition them there because of some setbacks that escaped them once to get within, um. Get part of the course of property line.
Okay.
So, um, the proposal that you see here, um, meets all those setbacks, um, has been reviewed by the Conservation Commission and approved by them. Has been reviewed by the, um, the State Fire Marshal. And has been approved by those folks, um, and has also met the approval of, um, your fire chief.
Is that a full-size plan or what?
It is, yep.
Okay.
Want to take a look at that?
Yes, please. I see where you want to put them down here. My only, my only concern is the, is the grade in there. Um, being that they're on the low side of the parking lot. You know, we get. You know, we get ice and all kinds of crap up here and that's where the trucks come in. Uh, what do you guys get for protection for the tanks? To prevent, uh. A normally truck coming in. You know, and sat heading for the tanks on the glare ice parking lot.
So there'll be two things installed. There'll be, there'll be eight-foot fencing around the entire tanks themselves.
Okay.
Inside of that fencing on, on the inside, not, not the pond side, but on three sides, there will be guardrails installed.
Oh, guardrails? Okay.
Guardrails, yep.
Alright.
And those are called out.
Okay. Yeah, I was gonna suggest, so you'll. Some type of concrete blocks or something, but yeah, you need something that's. God rail will work for sure. Okay. Well, thanks, and guy will go all the way around. Uh, is this like an opening for, for a man to go through?
Yep, there'll be, there'll be mandors at there. There'll be three loading stanchions, two for offloading, one for unloading. Those will have their each individual mandor.
Yep. Three is or there's?
There's three.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yep, down there in the end. So the tanker comes in. He comes in and swings by so that he doesn't have to back up. They, they park down there. They offload on the bottom side and then the box tails will, uh, load opposite the fuel oil.
You love ground tanks, correct?
Correct, yes.
Yep.
Two thirty thousand tanks.
Anybody calculate how big of a crater they'll leave when they all blow up?
Uh, they tend to burn slower than that. It's more of a nice, a nice warm glow.
A nice one, well. From Canada. I, I, I don't see any issue with it. I looked at it already. My, my concern with just the. Protection purposes, traffic protection, being on the, on the low side of the parking lot, you know?
There is going to be some regrading that's done because we can't have them on a steep pitch. Um, they've been set a little bit further back towards the rear for that reason. Um, on the bottom end, there's going to be some regrading down the parking lot so that the tankers sit flatter.
Okay.
Um, not significant, um, if you want more specifics on that, Chris maybe could.
No, I'm just.
Exactly what?
My concern was, was the actual just, uh. Impact zone, so to speak, or preventing it, you know, or providing an impact zone, I should say.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Are there two sets? Yeah.
Well, good practice. Well, good. Looks good.
Um, all detail in addition to that will be, so where the tanks were in the back. Will, there's, there's a, there's an existing fence that went around the tanks themselves. Uh, we're, we're proposing to expand that to the extent of the, of the gravel parking lot now. To use that for, again, for a secured area to store, um, the tanks, customer tanks, to park the trucks.
Um, oh, where the present tanks are now.
Correct, out in the back, yeah, yeah. So there'll be, there'll be a sliding gate. That's a, if, if you go back there right now, there's a point where the, where the asphalt ends and becomes gravel right at that point. We'll have a gate installed and then everything beyond that will be surrounded, uh.
Okay.
With, uh, fencing so that all the, all tanks are secured and, uh.
Now, what about the, that's not going to affect, you're going to keep the other ones up by the. By the diesel rack?
Yes.
Small propane tanks?
Yep, yep.
So this is just for. Loading and, and.
Bulk storage for.
Bulk storage for the peddler trucks, right?
Yeah, correct, yeah. No, there's, there's no small tank loading and filling back.
But that's being servicing, nothing here. This is all, okay.
Um, we've had discussions with, uh. With the fire chief about, uh, getting together before, once this is all put together, but before it goes into operation. Of, uh, having an onsite meeting with, uh, with fire department, going over the operation of it where the emergency. Equipment is located. Exactly, um, we do, we've done that at a couple of our other locations. We, uh, we met, we have a site up in Greendale, New Hampshire. Where we've had, uh, annual trainings with, uh, seven or eight towns around where, where, where we get to get an involved plan up there and go over processes and procedures and emergency response and such. And we're more than happy to do the same with, with you folks and any other towns around here that are interested in it.
Yeah, I think we'll leave it up to the. The experts when it comes to that. Yeah, better than what it was. Um. Just saying, if this is just a what site plan review, what, what do we classify this as?
I, I would say that it's an approval. For an amendment to what they had existing, so an. Amendment to their previous site plan review. We can do a decision sheet. And get that out to them based on whatever your decision is tonight.
I just don't know if we should have done it because of public hearing, that's all I'm asking. Because we're amending a site plan or a previous site plan review, which would have been under. We may have to, to do it.
I don't know the answer to that. Off the top of my head.
What'd you guys build time? What are you looking at? I mean, as far as you guys like ready to go or just you still have some time?
Two weeks ago.
Huh?
Two weeks ago. Well, we want to have it fully operational for, for the fall, for the heating season and it takes a, you know, it takes a few months to.
Yeah, yeah.
To control these projects.
Well, why don't we do this? I mean, just.
Why don't you vote on it? I'll get a clarification and I'll. Fix whatever I need to fix if I. Upd it.
Was it, the, the issues, that's the only thing I really have for issues, but I think just, uh. To be, um, politically correct, so to speak. I think if you just schedule a public hearing, it's going to be a formality. To open it. I mean, you, you can check, but I'm willing to bet that's probably the. Procedure for. Amending a site plan review is that we'd have to kind of just do it. Under the public hearing notice again.
Okay.
And just kind of open it and put dog and town, but you can still move forward as far as. We're okay with it. It's just a formality I write on our end. Which is going to be something that'll kind of cover your butts later on. You actually had a. Site plan review with approval and.
Okay.
A signature line.
So that involves, um, an- another meeting back here with.
Yeah, Lory will check into it, but I'm pretty sure that.
Twelve. I'll check into it.
Yeah.
Okay.
But if not, you said, um, I'm fine with it. And if you want, accept the motion to, um, I'll have to take a motion to accept the plans as submitted. And then we'll. Get it from out then, and then if we do have to go to public care, we'll just redo it. So, okay, yeah, yeah, so, okay. Motion to accept is submitted. You hear a second, Frank? Okay, all in favor? Alright.
Um, you need to do, can you do it so that John can participate to do a roll call vote, please?
Sorry, John, I forget you were there. You awake? John?
I'm here, I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm, I'm, was distracted. I am here, sorry. Alright, so yes.
Is sleeping considered a distraction? Okay.
I was not sleeping, I promise. Yes, I'm fine with everyone.
Okay, so there we go.
Thank you.
I forgot he was there. Sorry about that, John. I forget you were there.
No worries at all.
Um, alright, so go with it. You can leave here as an approval. It's just going to be a formality. Um, actually, you don't, you even have to come to the, the public care and, um, as long as you have a set of plans, we can.
Do you want to keep those?
It's.
Yes, please.
Two separate, we only, we only need one, so if you want to take one, it's like, fuck you.
You guys.
Okay, alright.
I will be in touch tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you for your time.
Good to go, alright, thank you. And we'll let you know if you're the public air and then you're, 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 maybe to, you know, show up or whatever.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Can you need anything additional?
Yeah, do you have a quadrant I got of this guy?
I can, I can go on brand now.
Okay.
I, I have all.
Everyone, that was pretty.
Thanks, Brian. Thanks, Chris.
Alright, number two, um. A and I request by grad engineering for private oversight LLC for accomplice lane. Project continuation. Um, that was just a simple, did the.
So.
Oh, yeah.
In your packet, I received an email today from Attorney Tree. With regard to, and I'll let you explain what's happening. We've been having a lot of problems, not problems, but. Also with the registry of deeds.
Yeah, sometimes they did, uh, regime and they get really, really strict about, uh, what the notes are on the.
I think they may have been retrained again.
So what happened?
Uh, so essentially the, we got the milos all set. We brought them down there and, uh. They sent them back because they didn't have the eighty-one X statement, basically what, what's on it, an arch typically, uh. Didn't have that. A plan of land. So when you have a plan of land, it basically says we're not creating any, you know, new lot lines with this plan. And they wanted that statement on there for the town of Templeton. Uh, on there, so we just got to add that statement and then, uh, s- send it back out to them, so, uh.
They can't really do without you doing our part first, so. And. Ms. Tavano did provide a check for eighteen hundred dollars, so that part is all set.
Okay.
Um. If you want to take a minute to read the email from.
No, I, I, I believe, I just want to make sure we were doing it. You know, right as far as, um.
So the registry is requesting it.
Okay. Alright, I like a good argument, but I'm not going to argue with the registry. Just be a tease.
They always win.
Yeah, that's what's good. If they're way that I way, go out, you know?
Yeah.
Um, okay, so with that being said, we have the plans, whatnot, my law here.
Iler is on the table. One of those is the Mylar.
Okay. Nothing's changed, right, on the plan?
Nothing's changed, but if you, you guys have any questions for me, it's, uh, pertaining to the survey or anything like that.
Nope.
You do need to vote, though.
Yep, um. This was not, this is just a simple A and S, so okay, um, yeah, I'll entertain a. Motion to accept the plan for, um. What's the proper, uh?
The compass lane project.
Uh, oversight LLC for compass, state for compass lane project. Mike makes that motion, probably a motion that's. Okay. John, want a second that?
Yes, second.
Alright.
No, I'm paying attention, I'm sorry.
It's alright, alright, um, all in favor? John?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Lori, I can't, I can't sign until Thursday or Friday.
That's fine, and I'll hook up with you and get you your Mylar and everything, okay?
Alright, guys, guys.
Thank you, have a good night.
Sign the Mylar, these three copies.
I need at least one copy signed, um, so if I can get all three of you and I'll get John on Thursday, that's all set. If you have time to sign the rest of them after. That would be good. So I gotta give one to the town clerk and one to the assessor.
What's today's date?
The thirteenth, five thirteen.
May thirteenth?
Yes, sir.
Twenty-five.
Yep. He's being really good. You don't have to quit. You're fine. Does he like to write?
Oh, yeah.
He's protesting the.
Yeah.
All telling, it's just for us, no mind him, right? This might. Uh, we're, it's like, we have a plan to get on line one? Where are the other?
No, there's more in your packets. The plans are in the packets.
Yeah, this is sign one is ready, yeah?
Well, for now, I'm, I'm gonna need at least a couple more. You don't have to do it the second if you don't want to.
Yeah. It's, it was what, five, five thirteen, you said?
Yes. Thank you. You just leave the pile. I'll take care of it after.
Okay, um. Next on the agenda. A and I request from Alfred Berry, um, PLC for Zachary. Lemire, 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 yeah.
Yes.
For, um. Twenty-seven W Road and the first church at that one. I don't. How's Alfred Berry doing today?
He's doing well, crazy, crazy busy.
What do you got?
Well, basically, um.
You do have the.
We have the whole Lemure family here.
Right.
Uh, Zachary's gonna sell a, a lot to his dad, but in order to do that, he had to purchase a triangular piece from this, the church.
Good, we have it here, we have it here, okay.
You have a copy of the plan, right, somewhere?
Yes.
Mylar is up there too.
Okay.
Hmm, well, there definitely.
In your packet, there is a letter from David Hudala, who is authorized. For the sale of. Piece of property.
I'll put it for sure.
Correct, right, yeah, I made sure that he was authorized by their board.
Yeah, thanks, sir.
I have to come up and look at it myself. I haven't seen it in a month and a half, so.
Okay, so. The. Who's selling the land? The church? No.
The church is selling, uh, this parcel X. This, 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 just this tiny piece here.
To who?
To Zachary.
To Zach, which is.
Good.
It doesn't matter who, but okay.
So they're adding that to this, and it was for frontage purposes. So that you have.
For right now, Zach's property is like here?
Yeah, it goes on this line here.
Okay, so, okay, so now he's gonna, oh, wow, you only had fifty-seven feet, huh?
Right.
Okay.
And, and, and so in order.
Is that the Coaches Old House? Is that the Coaches Old House?
I believe it is.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, okay.
Yeah, it's, you know, soon as you go around the corner.
It's the first, oh, yeah, okay, that would be Coaches, okay.
Yep, and so then they're going to sell this one to his dad. So it's all in the family.
Oh, what, is this a, this is a separate? Oh, you own both lots, so it is?
He, he owned, the, the original lot is. What you see here in the whole perimeter.
Oh, the whole thing, okay.
Yes, so. He's going to keep this and add this to. This, you're gonna end up with. This plus that.
I understand.
Then, uh, this is just a separate parcel that we're creating with this.
Okay.
So he can sell it to his dad.
Right, but they were all, they were already separate parcels before.
No.
No?
No, this is a new parcel.
Okay, alright, so the original parcel had the one fifty plus the fifty-seven.
Correct.
So you're getting the extra ninety-four, forty-two. To make this one.
Correct.
A, a, okay.
Yeah.
A legal lot, so it'd be, okay.
Just for friendly purposes, they pay.
Okay. And that's coming from the church?
Yep. And they're all on.
And what's the church getting?
A good piece of cash.
Your blessings? Okay, I understand now.
Yeah, so it's pretty straightforward. It looks a lot more complicated than it is, but.
So two lots of things in size, only one new lot here.
That's basically, there's only, at the end of the day, one new lot is being created. We just had to rob from Peter to pay Paul from the church.
Correct, okay.
For frontage purposes.
And I don't think I gave you a checklist for it, but I have one here that I can read down for you if you'd like.
Yeah, is this considered one or two? Transactional lots as far as fee goes?
I would assume that it's one. Because it's creating one.
One new lot, right.
You look at it both ways, but I guess we'll. We'll leave it like that, seeing as it's the church.
Well, and right, and I think it is.
Saving three hundred bucks.
It really is just creating one lot.
Alright. I would add, just one, alright. Alright, I'll extend a motion to, or you want to go down the?
It's up to you. Do you see everything you need on there?
Yep, permit markers, plus a three. Get the right frontage.
Mm-hmm, it's not leaving any non-conforming. There are no notices from the ZBA because it wasn't needed.
Zoning district. Good.
Village.
Description of lots are all here too.
Was it only a village district?
There, there you go. I probably have a zoning list somewhere.
There is a zone.
Yeah. Yeah, there you go.
Oh, district village, okay, yeah, it says on there, okay, yeah.
List of the village and then all the current environments.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay.
As far as the list goes. So I'd take a motion to accept the plan as submitted.
Still moved.
Okay, seconded by John. Uh, all in favor?
John says yes.
Okay, thanks, son. Okay, so we're good on that. Uh, what's this, my lot here?
It's rolled up right in front of you. Now, John isn't going to be able to sign that until Thursday.
Okay.
Um, he's somewhere nice and warm right now. Sorry, John giving you up.
Yeah, it's very warm, actually.
So as soon as I get John's signature, I can give somebody a. Randy a call, so he can take it down to the registry.
Perfect.
Oh, he's jumping the gun, actually. Yeah, I got mine, I got my.
He's very good.
He's driving that dog currently.
Running by registry, like my last signature?
Yeah.
And my paper signatures are different. The, the Mylar has to be what, how you wrote nicely slow and put on the registry card. The.
It's a cemetery motion? No, it's, yeah, it's out back.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's just trees right now.
How old's the boss back there? Well, look, we have one open position here. They got too late, put his name in.
The next one next month, maybe him.
He'd be the right candidate.
We all set, I think?
Hmm?
All set, I think?
You're absolutely.
Oh, wait, okay, give you the Mylar.
I need one more signature, yeah.
Touch base with Randy.
I'll take care of it.
Kill some rabbit.
No problem.
Okay, you guys are good to go.
Alright.
Thank you so much. Good luck.
We have plenty of time to go get an ice cream.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
Yeah, great. See you later, there, big guy.
That's your seat up there.
Bye, buddy.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Thank, thanks for keeping all those old people in order for me back there.
Thanks, guys.
Have a good night. So I'm not sure when we're ever going to have you guys be able to review minutes and sign off on them and vote because.
Why don't we just do it the next meeting?
We're gonna have to because. I don't have the right. People for them as I'm looking at them. I don't have enough.
Okay, um. Okay, that one's passed us. Once the United Berry Road continuation, that was for the Valley View.
Yep.
Alright, I did go down there, like I said, I was going to at last meeting. I met with pistol court. The day after, a couple of days after. And I also spoke with, uh. The building commissioner about that and. Although he did put his tent up. He's still, according to. Mr. Hanks, he still needs to do his. Site plan review, the drainage, the parking.
Yeah.
And so on and so forth, so. He was informed, so whatever. Um.
Okay, so I need to get in touch with him?
Yeah.
Okay.
To tell him to, um. Uh, he needs to follow through with it, because otherwise he's gonna be bouncing things off with. Mr. Hanks, and he's gonna have a tech that he can't use or something, so.
Okay.
We'll tell him to.
And he knows this.
Yeah.
Okay.
But if you, you might want to send him to something formally.
I will.
Because that was just one-on-one with him, so.
Okay.
Yeah, totally not here to make your life miserable, but it's just a ma- it's just procedure. And Mr. Hanks is a zoning enforcement. Officer, so we just follow directions from. From him, not the other way around, so.
Okay.
I, I have to say, I'm not the planning board police, but. Mr. Hanks needs assistance and I help him out.
Okay. I have. I'm going to tell you I put the catch basins on there. Um, retention.
Retention, detention, but, yeah.
I, I had zero time to get you any information. And I apologize.
Well, we, in fact, we already took care of. All that, all the retention monies, all this and that about five years ago.
Yep.
Um, we. Dispersed it, used it, whatever we did at the time. So there's no loose account, because we had accounts that were like. Twenty-five years old, my buddy, they were out there, some of them, I never, I never even heard of them.
Right.
As far as the names of these, you know, small developments, what have you?
There are some still on a list from previous site plan reviews and things like that sometime when you have time.
Yeah.
Um, if you want to stop by, I'll pull out the list and maybe you can enlighten me on some of them.
Yeah, I, I think we're gonna. And maybe something we might have to, um. Address it internally as far as when it comes to the, the bonds and whatnot for those bonds because. Um. They're just not being, they're not being maintained, even though they have the money in the, in the funds, it's. It's almost something that the. I'm not gonna pass the buck, I don't wish to pardon say. You know, parks or highway or somebody, or even they're gonna have to sub it out and say. You know, parks or highway or somebody, or even they're gonna have to sub it out and say. You know, if they mow these ponds out, like they're supposed to, they wouldn't have to be taking. Eight inch trees out of them.
Right.
You know, because you're not supposed to let the trees grow on the slopes because it just deteriorates the.
Okay.
Uh the function of the of the basin itself. Um it's kind of too late for the ones that are out there, but if we can. Somehow, some way. Fund a, or have that money go into a. A fund or even just, you know, get it to the highway department, but say you need to start maintaining. These these slopes or whatnot. It's a hell of a easy to do with a lawnmower and weed whacker than just do a chainsaw and excavator.
Yeah, and I know that there are certain ones that.
I'm not passing no blame.
No, 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 no. Highway does maintain some of them.
Yeah.
But some of them, I think, were. Retained by the people who own the property, so. That's where I was supposed to do some research and just to have time.
Um. But that's, I mean, some of them, like people, like they're close in their back ass, some people mow them.
Right.
Just because it's in your back ass, like great, it look great.
Yeah.
But some up here like. Minuteman, whatnot, those are just forested holes in the ground, that's all they are.
Okay.
So there's no way to service them, there's no way to get the the silt and stuff out of which it's supposed to have done.
Okay.
There's no way you get it out because you you literally, you literally need an excavator going here.
Pull the trees.
All the trees out and and fix the slopes and then get down in it and and muck it out, but.
Sounds like a great job.
Sounds like a great job. Somebody wants to do it for free because we get the money, we had the money, but we.
Well, well, after you. Look at the list, maybe you'll be able to tell me if they pertain to what it pertains to, so I did get that. Um but somebody. With a longer history in this department needs to look at it and enlighten me.
Yeah, I mean, they can highway, whoever, just.
Yeah, hand it over.
Just go in there and just clean them up. I mean, they're not wetlands because they're detention bases, detention bases, so. Just march in and get the crap out of them and start over.
So they work.
Yeah, they're a functioning.
Right.
Component, they're not.
Okay.
They're not wetlands. They may discharge you a while in, but you're on this side of the pond, literally, they're.
Right.
Whole idea. That love conservation agrees with me over there, but I think she does.
I I agree that they're not wetlands, but they could be in a buffer zone, but.
But they all have access to them. When you're designed, they all have access to them just for that reason.
Right.
So. Okay, we checked that one off. Um. Agenda items for next meeting, May twenty seventh.
Does anybody have anything they want on the agenda?
You mean like new business?
New business.
I like to bring it up tonight for the meeting. Okay.
Oh, I'm with you. Yep.
No, I mean.
I got it.
Nothing. Nothing came up, uh. Anybody got anything they want to discuss the next meeting?
Okay, I'll make it up as I go along.
Yeah.
I'll let you know.
As of right now, do we even have much of an agenda next meeting? Okay, so we'll just see with this time of year, with things starting to get slow, we kind of.
We'll see how, yeah, I'll let you know what we have if we have anything.
Uh why don't we just put the. The first half hour or something like that for the minutes, so you don't schedule, if anybody does come in, just schedule them for seven, not six thirty. And we'll just take care of the minutes first thing.
Okay.
We need the right configuration of members.
Which is.
We'll see what we can do with what we got.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay.
And. This was unusual for Charlie not to be able to be here.
I'm sorry, Dennis, Dennis, very solemn business.
I think we need to check on him.
Okay.
Just to make sure he's okay.
Yeah, it was Dennis, always, always here.
Yes.
Um. Seeing nothing left. Does anybody else have anything else?
No.
Motion to adjourn. All in favor? John?
Don't sleep with you.
Yeah, let's adjourn. Yeah, oh, I'm here.
Wake up and go to bed.
Thank you for.